Okay, everybody will begin the meeting with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Could I have a motion to approve the village board meetings from the minutes, rather, from the meeting of February 1st, 2024?
I'll move it.
Second.
There any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. If anyone is wishing to make a citizen's comment, would you come forward to the mic, state your name and address?
Serial number? Mary Ann Williams, Two Division Street, representing the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce. Want to tell you about some of our upcoming events. First of all, tomorrow we're having a ribbon cutting over at Olive's Eatery from 4:00 to 7:00. Have a new owner over there, she's making some changes, so we're gonna go help her celebrate. Two weeks from today is a leap day, so we're taking advantage of the extra day this year and having an after-hours event at Savings Savings from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Everyone is welcome to attend. You don't have RSVP, well, we're asking people to RSVP so they have enough snacks on hand, but there's no cost to attend.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
I may have missed, where?
Savings Savings.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I said that. No, you have to figure that out, it's a treasure map.
It's part of the leap year, that's why.
Exactly, leap into, I don't know, discovery. We have every month what we call Coffee Talk, and that's at 10:00 a.m., usually on the second Wednesday of the month. We understand not everybody can come at 10:00 o'clock in the morning on a weekday, which is why we're gonna start with these after-hours events and see if we can get a different crowd or maybe the same crowd. I don't know, I haven't checked with Cindy. Are you gonna be our official photographer for that as well?
I will be, yep.
And we had our monthly luncheon today at Sal's. Boy, they never disappoint. But I just want you all to know that you're always invited to attend any of our events, and if you want to be added to the email distribution list, see me afterwards, we'll get you on there. Otherwise, check our Facebook page or our website. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone else?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Tim Dale, 70 Oswego Street. I am wearing my Baldensville Center for the Arts hat right at the moment. We have had some really lively and productive meetings about the use of Paper Mill Island, so to inform the entire board, since I only saw a few of you a little while ago, the board itself is working on a proposal that they'd like to present to the trustees, probably within about two weeks, hopefully by your next meeting. We're looking at trying to create a full calendar of events that will span everything from music and theater to children's and community events that we might be able to schedule in there and create just a robust mixed use for the island for the 24th season. We're really excited. We've had some older board members, retirees, that have come back and contacted me and some other community groups that have said, wow, it's about time, it'd be really nice to put maybe my organization out there if we could find a sponsor for it, so we're really happy about that. Trustee Ryan Gol was at the last meeting, I'm sure he can fill you in in your next session, but we're looking at just what we can do over the 14-week period. We already have Seneca River Days kicking off the season there on the island, ending up with Taste of Beville in September, but in between, we hope to put on at least four musical, excuse me, four theater events on the island, as well as probably eight ticketed music venues if we can find the acts that'll be available for the season. And then we'd like to try to schedule a whole series of smaller, maybe Tuesday, Wednesday evening, free concerts and free performances of other kinds, including the local dance community, a lot of dance schools in town, and other things that we can kind of come up with. But the group that's meeting is quite large now, and we're really excited about it because that's how much energy we missed you there, Ruth, next time, hopefully next time. But we'll have that proposal for you in just a couple of weeks, and hopefully we'll be able to forge a good working relationship with the village in negotiating those fees. Thank you.
Just so you know, because of Mary Ann's Leap Day, you actually have three weeks till our next hour meeting.
Monkey.
But if you have something that you wanna share with your board in advance...
Yeah, I know where you all live. Yeah, I can get that to you in advance.
We'd have a chance to look at it.
I just bought myself some time, I like that. Yeah, no, it's coming together very, very quickly. We have a new board member in the Center for the Arts, Rock O'Nally, he's the director of special ed at the schools, and he's taken it with that subcommittee, and he's very excited and has just a tremendous amount of energy in terms of bringing different groups together, so we're hoping it gels really, really quickly for us.
Jim, I also want to mention, when you mentioned family, things, smaller events, keep in mind, we have Community Park, Orser Park, if there's another venue that works better than out on the island...
Well, one of our great committee meetings, Mary Ann Williams, had suggested we have a children's parade, and it would be nice if actually the parade ran down the park route, you know, it would be nice if they went from park to park to park. That would be a nice long parade without having to involve poor Jason out here to fight the traffic out there.
On Orser Park, they could go under the roadway into Balden Canal Square without ever going out onto the road, and then just over the bridge and...
Yeah, as long as they can make the turn definitely by the canal cafe, we're good. All right, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? We have a celebrity out here tonight.
Oh!
You guys are supposed to speak either not meeting, but...
No, we only have one agenda item. Kevin Road, Lysander Town Supervisor, I was just, we had one agenda item, it was a light meeting, I just wanted to stop down and watch what's going on in the village, so our meetings...
Say hi to Jimmy, Kevin?
Yeah. It's, you know, hopefully we get our meetings straightened out, I love, one of the first things I'd like to do is try to, so people in the village could also attend town meetings and village meetings, so they don't have to pick between one, but tonight we had a stop sign agenda, so it was pretty quick. Thank you.
Did you approve the stop sign?
Oh, yeah, there was no problem, it was a seven-minute meeting with a public comment period, it took a couple hours. Yeah, it was, but, so, I just wanted to say hi, you know, feel free to reach out to me, I've got a mountain full of stuff on my plate just being six weeks into the job, but, you know, I appreciate any support, input, anything we can do to help you out.
And you know I can empathize with you.
We're the same, we're at a couple committees together, all of them, thank you.
Seeing no one else charging up to the mic, move on to trustees' comments. Joseph? It's okay if I call my trustees by first names.
No, that's fine. I'm happy to be here, and I look forward to working more. And I'll stick to the agenda.
Trustee Collins?
Hi, Trustee Collins. I just wanna, I wanna commend the Baldensville Central School leadership and the police department today with handling the bullet that was found in the elementary school bus, I believe it was, and they did their due diligence, they were able to find no other traces of any other bullets or any other ammunition, and, yeah, you guys did a really good job, so just wanna pass my congratulations to you guys. They work really well together, DeBarbury and, you know, F. and Jack, you guys are really, you guys have good leadership, so I commend you guys. And outside of that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Just the agenda for me, thank you.
Okay.
Just the agenda for me, I think.
Agenda's fine with me.
Okay, now we get Eric.
I don't want to say actually, but I would like to hear from our attorney when it comes to the referendum to understand, you know, what he's researched and what the options are there, and I don't think an executive session would be needed for that, that could be something we discuss in the public and...
I don't know what he...
I don't know what he's bringing either, that's all I wanted to say, I'll stick to the agenda otherwise, so.
Okay. I guess that comes back to me, I actually wrote some things down, so I wouldn't forget. One thing that I noticed, and I saw somebody mention this on Facebook, was that with our strange weather we've had, people were out doing yard work and cleaning up, and some people were putting it in the street, and we really wanna emphasize, don't do that, no one's gonna pick it up till we get into the middle of April, other than the snowplow who may wing it right back into some other place. So, thank you for making an effort to keep the village clean, but not in the street, please. Secondly, I wanted to mention that a major focus that I've been working on, and we'll see some of this on the agenda, is trying to chase down grants and chase down, working my way through the maze of figuring out grants, continue to work on those. We have two on the agenda, you're gonna see, I'm proposing that we hire a grants writer for a specific purpose, and she will be chasing grants from the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act and the Intermunicipal Water Infrastructure Grant, and maybe another one. Something that I've proposed, and I don't know if this will happen, would be the south side of our village, if you're aware, we have water towers out on Oswego Road and one up Route 31, on the south side, there isn't anything. So when we have issues that separate our two villages with water lines, it's harder for our water department to provide the same amount of water pressure that is normal without that tower. And unfortunately, the last time Chuck learned that often we have an agreement with Aqua, we have valves connecting our systems, and if Aqua needs help, we open a valve, if we need help, we can open a valve and the water comes in, and they told Chuck they couldn't give him water pressure for the south side, which surprised us, but, so whatever, that's some of the things we're looking at, improving infrastructure, Chuck's got a list of things that he thought we could do. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank Chuck and Bob. The Downer Street signal light in front of the Rite Aid is gone, and gone at 90% expense to the private owners of those lights, and it was through their efforts and their diligence that this dysfunctional light is now no longer there to confuse drivers, so thank you. Something pro-housing community. The governor has put forth a proposal, put forth, I think last summer initially it started, some, a pro-housing community effort, and so I've started the process, actually, that's on our agenda tonight, to authorize me to sign a letter to send in, to start pro-housing agenda which allows us, we have to go through a whole bunch of hoops, but all we're doing is a letter of intent, eventually doing a local law, and a couple other things that then open doors for potential state funding. If we don't do these, these are the rules of the game with the state, then we can't ask for money to help us with Main Street and a couple, and five other grant opportunities. So this is a process that unless we get into it and it looks negative to us, we'll proceed with so that we can have an opportunity to apply for more funding.
Sorry, did you say that was an agenda item? Because I don't see it.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not because our attorney told me that was an administrative function and I could do it, so, and it's gone, the letter's gone, the first step is gone.
Okay.
The local law is not, although Bob has already prepared that. I also want to, this is for the board, I was looking through the NICOM manual of running public meetings, and I think we should revisit adopting a local law for video conferencing, that we would revisit that and go ahead and hold a public hearing eventually and adopt the law. I don't think we can use the same old law, but Bob will tell us if we can or can't, and adopt the written procedures and policies necessary to be able to implement that for this board, other boards, and committees, and then go forward with that. Main Street, I mentioned Main Street, the state program, we have the county Main Street grant, deadline for submission of applications was today, because we have to submit everything to their office by closing tomorrow, and we had a total of $741,000 worth of applicants applying to improve their facades and their businesses. We sent the whole thing to the county, they say they will only give you $500,000, and then the rest is up to the property owners, which would be about 32% match, which still isn't a bad deal in many cases. So that's in the process, expect to hear more about that in the coming weeks. Last thing I want to mention is elections. Couple of things about elections, I want to remind everybody who's gonna put signs out, they can't be in the street right away, that's behind the sidewalk, keep that in mind, or our codes officer may collect them and then you have to come back and pick them up in his office and whatever, it's always confusion about this. So I just wanted to remind people of that, I want to remind everybody the election is March 19th, 12 to 9 here. And then I wanted to give a little, where's our viewers, they're over there, a little guideline to the viewers, for the first time in my memory, there'll be propositions on the ballot, and when you vote, you need to select, one proposition is to move elections to June, one proposition is to move them to November. I have not seen the ballot, so I don't really wanna say number one and number two, because I don't know which order they'll be in, but, I don't know if any of you do. You do? You do?
June is one, November is two.
Okay, so when you vote, there's gonna be trustees, pick your slave trustees, pick and choose, whatever, when you come to the propositions, there's, if you don't vote, you're voting for March, okay? If you vote yes for June and yes for November, and they both pass, it'll go to a court for a decision. If you want June, vote yes for June and no for November, that would be the cleanest then. If you want November, vote yes for November and no for June, make your choices. If you don't want to leave March, vote no for everything, you know, just, so those are your options. I'm not telling you which way to go, but it's gonna be different than a normal village election, so please read through those propositions and fill in little circles the way you would like to see things go.
And can I add, they will be on the back of the ballot, the propositions will be.
Okay.
Also, can you ask the people on Zoom if they can mute if they're not speaking?
Bob, I think you're, we'll get some feedback from your microphone.
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Can you just put yourself on mute when you're not speaking, because we're hearing a little bit of background...
But don't do it now, because you're next. Moving on to our department heads, we're gonna go to our attorney.
Yes, the question came up about the election, there are two propositions, the village is proposition one, that is, the resolution that the board passed, and the first proposition is to approve whether the resolution adopted by the board should be approved. The question ultimately is going to be, if one of them passes and the other doesn't, then that's an answer. If both of them pass, I think, I've reached out to the State Board of Elections, the County Board of Elections, NICOM, nobody seems to know what the answer is. I think, rather than go into theories about how to proceed, I would say, let's just wait and see what the election says, but if someone is in favor of one and not the other, voting for both doesn't help. So I think we should just wait and see, and then, at that point, I think we will need to bring a special proceeding, if they both pass, to make a determination as to whether, for example, if they do both pass, and whether they're deemed to be passed in order, in which case, the first one would ratify the resolution that was passed by the board, which might make the second one academic, who knows? So we'll see how that goes during the election.
Bob, what would constitute both passing?
That's my question. Each one gets more yes notes than no votes.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
In other words, it would be more yeses than no's, it's a yes, you know, just, how many voted yes and how many voted no, there's no minimum requirements.
So if the November gets 220 votes, June gets 200 votes, they both pass? Would both pass in essence if that was the case?
Yes.
As long as it was...
Depending on how many voted no, but let's say that they both have more yeses than no's, then the question becomes, which one, do they cancel each other out, or which one is given priority, and I don't believe that it's the one with the most number of votes.
Could we, as a board, take it and run with it and say it would be the most votes? Like, November gets 220, June gets 200, we just run with that and say, okay, it's November?
Well, that's up to the Board of Elections, which is indicated that we would have to get a judicial interpretation.
Okay.
Now, the other thing, the other thing that the board can do, the board always has the ability prior to the, prior to March 1st, to rescind its prior resolution, but that would only leave one matter on the ballot.
What kind of expense would we incur, do you think, if we had this situation play out?
I'm not really sure, to be honest with you, but, like I say, I, it wouldn't be a large expense to put something to the court, the question, because it's a matter of the village going to the court, not any other parties, because there are no parties necessarily in this, I mean, it's not one person versus another, or like, you know, Article 78, where you've got petitioners against the village or something, it's the village going to the, to a Supreme Court judge relative to an election question to get an early answer, so I don't think it would be that expensive. But, as I say, I think the best solution would be to wait and see what happens in the election, it may very well be that the people that are voting, that have been being brought out to vote for one proposition over the other, will vote yes for one and no for the other, so like you said, if 220 voted yes for one, and they voted no for the other, then the other probably wouldn't pass. Well, my recommendation would be to wait and see, and I think after the election, the board has other options which we can discuss at that time depending on what the election is.
Anything else besides the election, Bob?
No, I think, oh, the remote procedure, do you want me to, as I said, the board has not actually adopted its procedures, although we did have, we had some notes at the time, I can look back and see, and then at the next meeting, or before the next meeting, get something out to everybody if you'd like me to do that.
Well, this is, this is the question that I had, when I looked, tried to look into it, Bob, it looked like initially, the initial law that came in during COVID was rescinded and not renewed, and then a new law doing the same thing was put forth, so do we have to pass that local law again? That's what I don't know, if we have to do a new local law?
I don't believe so, but let me double-check on that.
Okay.
I'll get an opinion out to everybody.
Thank you.
Other than that, if there's any other questions, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Jumping to the other side of the room, this is weird, Evan. Village Clerk?
I just wanted to let the public know that we do have an information aid position available at the Village Hall. If you are interested, all of the qualifications are on our website, and what we need for that, so we are accepting resumes for that now. And also, again, village taxes will be mailed in two weeks, they're gonna be mailed on the 28th, and they are due without penalty by April 1st. Thank you.
So people get an extra day this year?
Yeah.
Listen, I'm gonna go to Ruth, Mark, since, so we don't have to jump back and forth too many times.
Changing it up. Just a couple quick things, the musical this year is Matilda the Musical, and we will have tickets from the Baldensville Teachers Association and Transportation, so if folks are interested, please call the Senior Center and let us know. It's happening early in March, so I want to make sure people know that it's happening Sunday, March 10th, so just give a call, and we'll make sure you give tickets. And I also wanted to thank Superintendent McCullough and the DPW for a tremendous amount of work they've done in the past couple weeks around the Senior Center, I think in due part to the fact that until about 3:00 today, we didn't see much snow, so thank you for all the work they've done, it was very much appreciated.
Moving on to our treasurer, back over to the other side of the room.
Thanks very much, just a couple of quick things, number one, I wanted to make the board aware that I have engaged with a CPA, just for the purpose of kind of ad hoc questions about some of our accounting stuff, it's been a long, you know, couple of years that I've really been on deep dive in our books and processing procedures and things like that, and along that way, I mean, I feel like I made phenomenal progress, but along that road, there have come up questions that I don't know what the best solution is, and so I threw a couple of contacts in the industry, I found a woman who is a retired comptroller, state comptroller employee, I think in Rochester District, who's also a CPA, and I think was also in public practice too, and so I'm gonna start using her, I have money in my budget to do it, I think her rate is, I think, $140 an hour billable in 15-minute increments, which is pretty reasonable, I don't have like 1,000 questions, but I do have questions just about things like the way that we, as the board, the way that we approve payroll. I've been told by other treasurers that it gets brought to the board in detail at least once a year, things like that, with the town of Lysander, and I know Supervisor Rhodes there, they approve the pay rates for every employee in their organizational meeting at the beginning of the year, I think it's that meeting, and frankly, I think that's good practice. We've been using the budget as kind of a tool to manage payroll, and the two things are separate, because if you say that they're not, then if I make a mistake in the budget, somebody's gonna get a pay cut, and, you know, things like that, so we need to manage those separately, and so we'll be presenting to you for your approval at the organizational meeting in April, the new pay rates, or no, it'll be in March, because that's when it takes effect for our fiscal year, to approve the new pay rates for all employees of the village for the next year. But it's all that kind of stuff, it's things like, how do I, what's the best way to reserve for things like, when we're in a contract negotiation with one of our late reunions, and, you know, we're gonna have a retroactive pay event that comes along, how do we reserve for other pay expenses, like somebody who may retire and get paid out? So that's that. Second thing, and I don't want this to be construed as my favoring or not favoring any propositions that are on the ballot, I just want to give you my opinion about funding elections. I just want to give you my opinion about funding elections. We have to decide what's right. The people will decide what's right for holding our elections, and we shouldn't be worried about what doing the right thing costs us. We should be ready to say, the money doesn't matter. If we want to have a fair and free and robust election, we should be willing to pay what we need to pay. And I think if I asked my friend at the Board of Elections if he concurred with me, he would say yes, because he's gone to the Anver County Legislature for more money, because he doesn't feel like he is able to, you know, staff the election properly and things like that. So it's a good problem to have, to have that increased turnout, but I think we just need to put the money aside and not worry about it, and just say, let's do the right thing election-wise, and we'll pay for it. We'll find it in the budget, and it's not going to amount to, it's not going to amount to a lot to begin with, but if we want to add things like publicity and, and, you know, banners around the community, whatever, to get the turnout up, we should be able to say, yeah, we have money for that. So those are my two things. Unless there are any questions?
I want to add to your comment that when I look at the cost of running election, running an election is a service provided to our citizens, and the cost of running an election whenever it's held is probably less than what it costs for us to pick up Christmas trees along the street. Another service.
Right, it's minstrel.
So it's a small, it's a service provided, it's not a huge expense to the community. Are there any questions for Mark? He'll be back up under budget modifications if you think of something.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving on to our public works.
Real quickly, we're done picking Christmas trees up for the Actually, we are, it's just that time of year. But if you have some, you need to get rid of them. If you drop them off the highway, we'll get them, or, you know, but, but this is the time that we're usually, usually done with it.
You can put it in my driveway, I'm building a brush for you.
Okay, all right. Don't say that. We could do that. We've been working with the Town of Amburant's engineer over the Senior Center on the roof over there, and he's come up with some, some ideas, and we're going to meet with a contractor over there Tuesday, I believe. We've got the grant from the state, the $100,000 grant, so we're excited that that's moving. We're going to meet with them next week. That should be good. Actually, that's all those bad questions. I had something else, I can't remember what it was. Oh, the water thing that you spoke about, just to clear that up a little bit, the, one of the water breaks that we just had was close to the line, the two lines that go under the, under the, over the bridge, under the bridge here. And since I've been here, we've never had to isolate both of them. Where that break was, we had to isolate both of them. And the county, like we said, we shared emergency connections, and the county was fantastic. We turned that on right away on the south side, and they just weren't, we thought that they'd be able to give us more pressure on that side, they can't. We were able to accompany that with one of our pumps. That worked out, but normally, normally, like, we're going to do some work over there, we're going to shut that plant down here, hopefully within the month. As long as we have our tanks on the other side, we can, we can manage both sides of the river. But for that one, it was a problem. And if we did have a tank on that side of the river, it'd be, it'd be very helpful to the, to the water system. So other than that, is there just questions outside?
Moving on to our police department, and my first question is, is it where are both mics at the same time? Well, Jason, we're glad to see you, but
How you doing, right? It's nice to see everybody. It's not all the time. I get to see all the faces. I know I bother Mr. Shepherd quite a bit.
Is she speeding it down?
Chief's, chief's under the weather, unfortunately, so he asked me to attend, but he didn't give me anything pressing, so.
Like when there's nothing pressing?
Yeah, that's usually a good thing.
Good. Moving on to pending business, there is none. And now onto new business. Could I have a motion to approve the budget modifications as proposed in the document Budget Modifications 2024.02.15.pdf?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any questions for our treasurer on those modifications?
Not really.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm just thinking, could we just word this as says the budget modifications PDF 2024?
I don't want to.
PDF document.
Item B, motion to approve the new water sewer paper bill format.
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Love it.
When does this take, when does this start?
It's going to start when we do our new credit card system, so we're launching that mid-April, so it'll probably be the first bills that go out May 1st.
Jody, do you want to kind of explain to people what it is?
I'm going to have Mr. Baker explain.
You want to do it, okay.
I couldn't quite hear what the question was.
Just explain what the new
What's happening with the water bills?
The water bills and sewer bills.
So you probably all know, because I think you all get water from the village, that right now we send those postcards out. We've been doing those postcards since I lived on Maple Road, which, you know, that's like 40 years ago. They serve their purpose, but they're difficult to align, and I think the clerk's office gets a lot of complaints about them, from lack of, of information to the kind of oldness of, of that method of delivery. And in this day and age, nothing really confidential on there, but people will say things about confidentiality. It's not in an envelope that's sealed up, things like that. So there, in the process of moving to the new system that Jody mentioned, there is a setup fee for designing an online presence for the bill, so that when people get an e-bill, click on their bill, and it comes up, it will have a template that the data populates. That setup fee is like $2,500. Every time we change the format of the bill, it's another $2,500. So if we have them design the postcard, and then we decide we want to go to an eight-and-a-half by 11 bill, which we talked about a couple of months ago, it's another $2,500. So we thought, let's kill two birds with one stone. The statement produces more data. It gives an option for a marketing message to be put on there, so we could give them brief status reports about searching for grants for the water infrastructure, things like that. It, it has the opportunity to put a QR code on it, so that when they come back and they go to be data entered, we can have a little scanner that will pop the account on the computer system, and it just makes the process quicker. And it's some, I think it's just a cleaner process to, to do it like that. And, excuse me. So, and then when you look at what the, the upcharge would be, or the incremental charge up for outsourcing it to a mailing house, because we aren't going to sit in the office and fold and stuff 1,000 bills a month, it's only about $1,400. And that, for a year. And it starts to make sense. It starts to be achievable, and I think it moves the village image-wise forward. So I can't tell you what the final design looks like, but I sent you some samples that Jody and I have looked at. I think she is, is leaning toward one of them. But what would happen in the processes the bills would run, and instead of them being printed in Village Hall and posted, they would be emailed to a mailing house, and they would print them, envelope them with a return envelope, which is really nice. We never hear about that, but people have studied it. You don't send a return envelope? I'm like, no, with a postcard? So it's just, it's just nice things like that. And it's not a postage paid return envelope, it's just one you got to put a stamp on. So anyway, that was our thought. It kind of closes the loop on a real enhancement to the water billing system and to the Internet presence. And, you know, it's, I think it's, it's achievable. If this presentation has been, if it's too soon or, or not enough notice for your level of comfort, paying, paying for another setup fee in three or four months would probably not break the bank. But if it's something that you're comfortable having Jody and I work through, then that would be great.
Mark, early in your explanation, I heard you say e-billing. Will that be a possibility where residents can sign up to receive their billing electronically?
Yeah, so that's a great question, Bruce. They will be able to do that online, and all they need to do is click and say, I would like to be changed to an e-bill. And I think, if I remember right, that when they, when they go to pay their water and sewer bill, if they do that online, it's going to prompt them and ask them if they want to change to an e-bill. I think it, it presents that each time, because we, we really want to drive adoption on the thing. Because that saves us money in postage and, and printing bills.
And then if they did that, will they have the option of paying via credit card or from an automatic, a bank withdrawal? Will, do you know what the e-billing
I'm sorry, sir.
Well, with the, I know some e-billing, you have an option of paying via, giving them credit card information, or giving them bank account information for a direct withdrawal. Will that be part of the scenario, you think?
They can do both. They can, they can sign up for like a recurring debit, which is something that, like a credit to your Verizon bill or your National Grid bill, where the bill will, when they receive their bill, if they get, however they get it, it will say on it, you don't need to pay this, it's going to be automatically drafted from your bank account on XYZ date. And they also can, I think they can call into the Village Hall and say, you know, I couldn't figure it out online, but could you put me on an e-bill? Could you change me to that? And we can do it. But the preferred method is obviously them doing it online, but.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, a second? Unless somebody is uncomfortable, would you like to call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's going.
Jody, just so I'm sure, the samples that we looked at, there was the York one?
Yeah, the York County. It's the clean and simplest one, and, you know, it's easy to read, so that's the one we're going with, the town.
Well, thank you, Jody and Mark, for all the work on this. You guys have been working on this for a while, I know, to kind of clean it up and modernize our billing process. Thank you.
That is great.
Item C, motion to approve the mayor to sign the Funding and Procurement Resources LLC proposal for grant procurement assistance in the amount of $5,000. This is the retainer.
Moved.
Any questions?
And I think you mentioned it earlier in your comments, the $5,000 will include those two
Yes.
Proposals.
Two major grants.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried? I will send Susan a letter tomorrow, signed. D, motion to approve two chairs. Let me, one gray with a broken back and caster from the mayor's office.
The trinket chair?
Yes. It's the ejection seat.
Ejection seat. I didn't pick it today.
It's not in there today.
Yeah, that's good.
One black chair with a broken height latch from the codes office as surplus.
Make a motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Do they need to be replaced, or are we just getting them?
Well, certainly the ejection seat, there's enough chairs in there.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
In the codes office, they've been borrowing, I guess, some of these chairs that are in here. But yeah, eventually we would, we'll let them figure that out.
It's appropriate that they could have their own chairs.
But we want to get rid of the stuff that's hanging around. Did we vote?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Chuck, can you see to that?
We'll take care of it.
No, they're not doing Christmas trees anymore.
Moved on to chairs.
Just complaining.
Item E, motion to approve the 2024 Canton Woods Senior Center agreement between the Town of Lysander and the Town of Amburant and the village of Baldwinsville.
Moved. Second.
Discussion?
Any changes?
Yes. No changes, but Kevin, be ready for me.
Try to see in the next couple of weeks.
You know, what, what is in there is what's been there for a long time, but there's things that I've been rousing about for a long time that I'd like to talk to you and Darcy, or whomever, to see if we can find some common ground.
And I've spoken with them here, and they're on board for, for that.
Okay.
They know it needs to be addressed.
Needs to be addressed, and within the, what I'm talking about, I don't mean to speak in riddles, is in, in the agreement for Canton Woods Senior Center, which if you haven't been there, you ought to go visit it, not saying you're old, but stop in. They do a good job, and all the people that are there are friendly. They'll welcome you, and want you to play things, games that I never heard of, Mexican train or something, I don't know. In any case, the major expenses are split between the two towns, and the village provides operating. However, as Ruth thanked Chuck for being over there working today, all those maintenance kinds of expenses that occur generally go on to village taxpayers' shoulders as an extra, even though we are all town residents and taxpayers. So if you live in the village, you get hit more than once. So somehow I'd like to look at that and see if there's a way we can make that more just, if you will. So whatever, that's
And the contributions haven't changed.
And the contribution has not changed in, ever.
About 10 years?
I think, I think 2012 or 2013.
And of course, no, no expenses have gone up in that time period.
No inflation, all of it.
Okay.
Ruth hasn't gotten a raise or anything. That's not
Did we vote on that?
We've got a motion in a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll sign that one tomorrow. Is there anything else anybody would like to bring up?
Anybody on the TV?
Bob, Mark, anything you want to add before we shut down? Bob, you're muted.
There's one question I had to think about for Mark on the, on the water bills. Can you pay scanning the QR code?
That's a great question too, Bob. I have not talked to them about that, but I wonder if you can. So that's, we'll bring that
I could do it at a restaurant now.
Yeah. I think the original intent that they talked to us about was that when the coupon comes back, there's a tear off, they say. The water bill and clerk would have a scanner, and they just would put that under the scanner, and it would bring their account right up on the computer system, as opposed to them having to type it all in, and we would find the account and all that stuff. So, but I wondered, that'd be, that would be great.
Yeah, maybe just be a database. I was just curious, because you see so many restaurants now where they, they don't come and pick up the bill, you're supposed to take out your phone and your credit card.
Oh, I go to the grocery store down here, and you go to Publix, and they, you get a QR code on the screen when you buy groceries, and just scan with your phone and go and pay. Yeah. So.
Yeah, if they have an option where a QR code can be scanned.
We'll talk to them about that.
If they had an option where a QR code could be scanned, and that would then pull them into the automatic, you know, signing up for the, the billing, that would be great.
Another good idea, yep.
And if, when they opt for e-billing, if that gives us their And if, when they opt for e-billing, if that gives us their email address, if we opt eventually to go to that BLAST concept, we would have people who are really willing to participate.
Yeah, the email address would go into the new credit card system, but it doesn't go back into our water billing system, so we'd have to have a way to, you know, retrieve them out of the credit card system, so we can, you know, input them to water billing, or input them into a, you know, alert system.
What I'm talking about is the clerk had proposed, and trustee Seaco had proposed, that we have a better way of communicating to citizens based on them providing us their email address, so we could send information out, election tomorrow, water main break, boil your water, whatever, something could be sent out quickly, but we're still working on that. Could I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Motion.
Second.
The tag team here, all in favor? Could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:21?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Job show, you're learning that cheese or something.